Be the basics. Be prepared and have your bedding, special dietary items, entertainment, and disaster supply kit with you.
For more information, visit www.wether.gov/melbourne or www.embrevard.com.
You're watching Titusville City TV. Stay tuned for the Titusville City Council meeting.
Welcome to the 5:30 PM April 25, 2023 Presentations City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speech?
This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. City Manager, special recognitions and presentations.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. First item today is Item 4A, and we'd like to recognize Ms. Rachel Mueller from the Planning Department as City of Titusville's Employee of the Month for April 2023, and Brad Parrish will read the citation.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you. I wanted to recognize Rachel Mueller because of all the work that she's done for us the past year and a half. Tonight's going to give you the culmination of a large project on a sustainability action plan and for a request for formal action later this evening as well. But I do, I'm not going to read what I submitted to you in recognizing her for the work that she did on that particular plan, but I just want to list out some other accomplishments by Rachel. She also helped us out with the Lean Six Sigma project related to our landscape ordinance and our pre-ordinance that we adopted a few years ago. She's been helping us with our low-impact development program, Vision Zero, Urban Forestry Grant, Resiliency Education Grant, which yesterday was, some of you attended, was a real success, was just one part of that entire project where we had an open house here and it was really well attended. Rachel is unfortunately going to be leaving us next Wednesday. It's her last day with the city, so we wanted to take this moment here and recognize her. She has been a pleasure to work for. She's been a huge asset to our department, and we will sorely miss her.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks, you can't leave. Right down there. Thank you so much. Want to say anything? Before you do, I'm simply going to say, and some of you know this already, you can't put into words what she's meant to us. She takes everything, I think she takes the benefit of our city personally. She takes ownership in it, and that's one of the things that makes her so great. And we're going to miss you beyond words. And if you have anything to say, and this is it, except go ahead and say you're just kidding.
I wish I could say I'm just kidding. I just want to say it's been a real honor to work for the City of Titusville. This has just been a really phenomenal opportunity for me, and I'm definitely going to take this with me wherever I go next. So, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be your sustainability planner, and I hope to see you all next Monday for our Lunch and Learn. It'll be the final part of our resiliency stewardship and education and outreach. There are flyers at the table over there, and that may be your last opportunity to say goodbye to me, so this is not a goodbye right now. We still have one more event left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Item 4B, which is the Proclamation of Poppy Days, which will be the 26th through 29th of May. And Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the proclamation for the record. Official proclamation of the City of Titusville, Florida, whereas poppies are handmade by the hospitalized veterans to honor veterans for their service and sacrifice by promoting and educating all people of the poppies' history and the financial benefit realized by our nation's veterans as a result of their distribution, and to remind Americans of the sacrifices of these veterans. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary Titusville Unit One has participated in the annual poppy drive for many years, and whereas poppy proceeds have been used and continue to be used for the rehabilitation of World War I veterans and those that have served in either of the following war periods of April 6, 1917, to November 11, 1918, and any time after December 7, 1941, and for the welfare of the families of these veterans, and for the rehabilitation of service members and women requiring treatment at VA hospitals. Therefore, I, Daniel E. Diesel, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor, do hereby proclaim 26th May through 29th May as Poppy Days.
On to Item 4C, which is Proclamation of Denim Day as April 26, 2023.
An official proclamation of the City of Titusville, Florida. Whereas Denim Day is intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remain a serious issue in our society, and whereas many in the society are uninformed about the issues of assault and forcible rape, Denim Day was instituted to call attention to the misconception and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and whereas Denim Day has been observed since April 1999 as a symbol of protest in response to the High Court's decision to overturn a rape conviction because the victim was wearing jeans. Whereas every year since the community members, elected officials, businesspeople, and students have organized to make a social statement by wearing jeans as a visible means of protest against the myths surrounding sexual assault or rape, and whereas every 73 seconds somewhere in America is sexually assaulted, approximately 1 in 6 women and 1 in 33 men are a victim of rape or attempted rape during their lifetime, and youth under the age of 18 account for approximately 70% of all reported sexual assaults and rapes. Whereas groups such as the Women's Center of Bevard are committed to educating our community about the truth of impact of rape and sexual assault in Titusville, now therefore I, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor of the City of Titusville, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2023 as Denim Day.
Yes, everybody. Everybody. I'm just going to do this. Thank you all for being here, and I'm glad we found our way where we were supposed to be. They were in the hallway getting ready to head out, not knowing where to go. But that being said, I did not know the symbolism of Denim Day until we started doing these proclamations. Very, very serious cause, obviously, and there are times when we have some funding for the Women's Center. We always say, gosh, I wish there was a day when we didn't need that. That day is probably no time soon, so we will all support you, and I will, with gladness, or maybe sadness, wear denim on that day. Thank you all for what you do. I think we're going to do better if we probably get in front of this, you think? So you guys go on, you guys go up there, get closer, and I always go to the back row. Somebody hold that up front. There, let's put this down.
Anyway, thank you all for what you do. Appreciate you. The next item is Proclamation for the Historic Preservation Month. Official proclamation of the City of Titusville, Florida. Whereas throughout the month of May 2023, the residents of Titusville, Florida and its visitors celebrate the importance of preserving historic resources and the significance to the local community. And whereas Preservation Month began as National Preservation Week in 1973, in 2005, the National Trust extended the celebration to the entire month of May and declared it Preservation Month to provide an even greater opportunity to celebrate the diverse and unique heritage of our country, cities, states, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas implementing historic preservation has shown to preserve the city's historic neighborhoods, it's an important architectural resources, provide financial incentives, and improve the local economy, especially in Florida, attracting tourism, and garnering interest in the city's architectural and cultural heritage. And whereas local preservation groups, state historical societies, business and civic organizations across the country celebrate Preservation Month through honoring the local historic sites, events, and promote historic places, heritage tourism, and demonstrate the social and economic benefits to the Historic Preservation Month during the month of May, and whereas the architectural design guidelines is the theme of the Titusville Historical Preservation Board's Annual Historic Preservation Workshop on 18 May 2023 to promote local historic designations in the city. Now therefore I, Daniel E. Diesel, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Titusville, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Historic Preservation Month.
I can tell you from working with some of these folks and listening to them stand up here and fight to preserve our heritage and our history, they make me proud. And sometimes they've advised me in things I didn't know, and they make me proud, and I appreciate, again, using that word ownership. You guys have truly taken ownership in what you do, truly. Thank you so much.
And Item 4E is the Proclamation for Water Conservation Month. An official proclamation of the City of Titusville, Florida. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the State of Florida, Water Management Districts and the City of Titusville, Florida are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the City of Titusville and the State of Florida have designated April as a typical dry month when water demands are the most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can save Florida's precious natural resources. And whereas the City of Titusville has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to water conservation, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water, thus promote a healthy economy and community, and whereas leak prevention is commonly thought to be the first step in conserving water, the City of Titusville, Florida will encourage citizens and businesses to focus on fixing leaks. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel E. Diesel, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Titusville, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month.
And that's really a big hand. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for what you do.
Thanks a lot.
All right, I think that's all of them, but I do want to say, like I have on every other one to some degree, and I appreciate what you do, appreciate what you guys do. The importance of water can't be overstated, now can it? So with that, we should always do our best to preserve water and keep it important in our lives, so thank you. I appreciate you.
And the next item, we're on Item 4F, which is in the series of department reports, which began in January. This is the Community Development Overview of the Department, and I think we have a video, Brad?
Yes, we have a video, and it's, I think you'll enjoy it.
City of Titusville Community Development Department, can I help you?
Hi, I'd like to get a building permit. Can I speak to someone in the Building Department?
Okay, I'll transfer you now.
Building Department, how can I help you?
Hi, I'm looking to get a building permit. Does your department do that?
Do we ever? In the past year, we've approved 4,828 building permits and conducted 13,855 building inspections and re-inspections. Every year just gets more and more busy. Our department hired two additional personnel, so now we have 11 staff members dedicated to enforce the Florida Building Code, making sure our structures are safe. And while the number of permit requests we've received increased, we've also managed to decrease our cost by 22.5%.
That's great and all, but what exactly can I do on this property? I want to do my research before I buy.
Well, that's a planning question. Let me go ahead and transfer you.
Good afternoon, planning, this is Eddie. How can I help you?
Hi, I'm looking at a piece of property. Can you help me out?
You've come to the right place. I can help with that. We maintain the city's comprehensive plan, zoning map, and land development regulations, and we also process planning applications like conditional use permits, comprehensive plan amendments, and rezoning requests. We are keeping busy. In the last year, the Planning Department issued a total of 82 planning applications. This represents a 78% increase in the number of applications over the last five-year average of just 46 applications per year, and 2023 is on pace to be just as busy. Additionally, our planning staff works with the Titusville Environmental Commission to achieve our 22nd consecutive year as a Tree City USA. Through the Florida Forest Service, we provided 50 free residential trees to celebrate Arbor Day and received $17,000 in grant funding to complete an urban tree canopy assessment. Our team also received $30,000 in grant funding from Florida Department of Environmental Protection to conduct resiliency stewardship and outreach.
You sure are busy, but the lot I'm looking at doesn't have an address. Can I speak to someone about that?
Okay, I'll transfer you over.
Hello, City of Titusville GIS.
I'm looking to get an address for my lot. Does your department do that?
Yes, we could definitely help you get an address. Our GIS staff has assigned 865 addresses in the past 15 months. Our zoning and future land use map also tells you current zoning and land use so you can decipher what can be built there. The zoning and future land use map received more than 8,000 views in the past year. Our department has also created more than 400 maps for council and zoning meetings. We also maintain an inventory for all the city's streets and other infrastructure for our other departments and other online maps that provide a great deal of information to get the general public on the city's website. If you haven't visited yet, please make sure to check us out at www.titusville.com.
But I think this property is in the downtown area. Does that change anything?
I'll transfer you to the Community Development Agency.
Community Development Agency, how can I help you?
I'm looking at a piece of property in the downtown area. Can you help me with that?
We sure can. The CRA is committed to making Titusville's downtown a vibrant place people keep wanting to come back to. We administer the building grant program, which awarded 10 grants, of which eight were facade and two were commercial interior, for a total of $200,900. Five grants were paid out totaling $39,800. And additionally, the CRA funded the following capital improvements in the CRA district. Drainage pipe improvements at $130,000, sidewalk infill at $58,000, Julia Street pedestrian lights at $60,200, street resurfacing at $181,300. One bicycle repair station was installed at Sandpoint Park at $1,600, and 12 park benches were installed at Sandpoint Park for $4,700. Two shade structures were erected at the Marina Park Dog Park at $65,100. Three grid smart intersection detection cameras were installed at Main Street at a total of $43,400. Replacement downtown light pole banners were installed on the light poles at $4,000. The Community Development Department also works with the city's Historic Preservation Board. We've received an award for the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation for its 2022 Communications Media Award for the Board's Explore Historic Titusville booklet, website, and mobile app. They also were awarded a grant from the State of Florida Department of Historic Resources to create architectural guidelines for historic buildings in the city. The Historic Board also applied for a 2024 Small Matching Grant from the State of Florida Department of Historic Resources to document and celebrate the city's black history.
Wow, that's a lot of accomplishments. But speaking of grants, which housing grants will I be eligible for?
That's a great question for our Neighborhood Services Department. Let me see if I can transfer you over there now.
Neighborhood Services, how can I help you?
I'd like to know which grants I'm eligible for.
Well, we administer many grants and neighborhood services for the city. Just in the past year, we've administered many types of federal and state grants totaling over $1 million awarded to the city. These grants can assist developers, homeowners, homebuyers, and renters. Over the year, we've assisted two families purchase their first home through our First Time Home Buyer Program utilizing $60,000 in federal funds. We assisted six homeowners with repairs to their home utilizing federal and state grants totaling over $219,000. We assisted 26 households with emergency payments for rent and utilities totaling $169,685. We provided funding to three nonprofit agencies to provide various public services to 61 individuals in the community utilizing $30,764 in federal funds. We provided subsidy funding totaling $136,615 to fund a new multifamily rental unit development for the homeless. And we further utilized federal grant funds to provide a community food program at the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center, which served over 8,100 meals using $37,409 in COVID-19 relief funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. Additionally, we provided funding totaling over $230,000 to nonprofit agencies to assist children and families in Titusville recover from the impacts of the pandemic.
Sounds good. I think I'm ready to schedule my site plan review meeting.
Okay, our Development Services team will help you schedule your site plan review meeting, so let me go ahead and transfer you over there.
Development Services, how can I help you?
Can I schedule a site plan review meeting?
Yeah, well, we're pretty busy right now, but I think we can fit you in. Believe it or not, 2022 has been a record-breaking year for our department. We've actually received 43 new site plan projects, which represents an 87% increase in new projects compared to 2021. Site plan projects can consist of subdivision, multifamily projects, and commercial and industrial products. Additionally, 14 site permits were issued for project construction for a 100% increase compared to site permit issuance in 2021. In 2022, our department issued 2,491 business tax receipts, which represent all of the businesses in Titusville, both commercial and home-based. Of those, 172 were new businesses in the city.
Well, I wasn't expecting to get all of this information out of a phone call, but I sure do appreciate everyone's help. Thank you.
Thank you for contacting the Community Development Department.
Wow. Great production, incredibly informative. I knew we were busy, but the numbers are astounding and the percentage of increase, wow. Well done, and Counsel, any questions? I see none.
Yeah, I do, I have a question.
That's when you got to hit that button.
Oh, I did.
I did. Go ahead.
Are we going to lose any more of your staff to Hollywood? I mean, were those actors? That was, Brad, that was really well put together. I actually sat there and didn't go to sleep. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
City Manager, I would just say, as I'm watching it, I'm thinking that would be an excellent video for us to bring to the Economic Zone. I don't know if they want to see it or not, but I, because you and I talk all the time about how busy we are and how our staff is, you know, paddling as fast as they can. I don't think I've ever seen anything so clear in that, man, we're moving. So just a thought. Thank you.
Next item is 4G, which Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors LLC will provide a presentation on the options to finance a public safety complex. Jay?
I think there might be a presentation.
Wow, that's a lot of accomplishments. But speaking of grants, which housing grants will I be eligible for?
That's a great question for our Neighborhood Services Department. Let me see if I can transfer you over there now.
Neighborhood Services, how can I help you?
I'd like to know which grants I'm eligible for.
Well, we administer many grants and neighborhood services for the city. Just in the past year, we've administered many types of federal and state grants totaling over $1 million awarded to the city. These grants can assist developers, homeowners, homebuyers, and renters. Over the year, we've assisted two families purchase their first home through our First Time Home Buyer Program utilizing $60,000 in federal funds. We assisted six homeowners with repairs to their home utilizing federal and state grants totaling over $219,000. We assisted 26 households with emergency payments for rent and utilities totaling $169,685. We provided funding to three nonprofit agencies to provide various public services to 61 individuals in the community utilizing $30,764 in federal funds. We provided subsidy funding totaling $136,615 to fund a new multifamily rental unit development for the homeless. And we further utilized federal grant funds to provide a community food program at the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center, which served over 8,100 meals using $37,409 in COVID-19 relief funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. Additionally, we provided funding totaling over $230,000 to nonprofit agencies to assist children and families in Titusville recover from the impacts of the pandemic.
Sounds good. I think I'm ready to schedule my site plan review meeting.
Okay, our development services team will help you schedule your site plan review meeting. So let me go ahead and transfer you over there.
Development Services, how can I help you?
Can I schedule a site plan review meeting?
Yeah, well, we're pretty busy right now, but I think we can fit you in. Believe it or not, 2022 has been a record-breaking year for our department. We've actually received 43 new site plan projects, which represents an 87% increase in new projects compared to 2021. Site plan projects can consist of subdivision, multifamily projects, and commercial and industrial products. Additionally, 14 site permits were issued for project construction for a 100% increase compared to site permit issuance in 2021. In 2022, our department issued 2,491 business tax receipts, which represent all of the businesses in Titusville, both commercial and home-based. Of those, 172 were new businesses in the city.
Well, I wasn't expecting to get all of this information out of a phone call, but I sure do appreciate everyone's help. Thank you.
Thank you for contacting the Community Development Department.
Wow. Great production, incredibly informative. I knew we were busy, but the numbers are astounding and the percentage of increase. Wow. Well done. And council, any questions? I see none.
Yeah, I do. I have a question.
That's when you got to hit that button.
Oh, I did.
I did. After I go ahead.
Are we going to lose any more of your staff to Hollywood? I mean, were those actors? Brad, that was really well put together. I actually sat there and didn't go to sleep. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
City Manager, I would just say, as I'm watching it, I'm thinking that would be an excellent video for us to bring to the economic zone. I don't know if they want to see it or not, because you and I talk all the time about how busy we are and how our staff is paddling as fast as they can. I don't think I've ever seen anything so clear in that, man, we're moving. So just a thought. Thank you.
Next item is 4G, which Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors LLC will provide a presentation on the options to finance a public safety complex. Jay?
I think there might be a presentation coming up. Perfect. Mayor, Council Members Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors LLC. We are the city's financial advisor when it comes to debt-related matters. And we're here to present just an overview of the city's existing debt portfolio, as well as talk about some preliminary funding options for some capital projects. I know that the city is at the very early planning stages of. In terms of the existing debt portfolio, the good news is the city has very little outstanding debt on its books right now. As you can see from this table, which I hope you can see on your screens in front of you, there's four transactions that are currently outstanding. Two of them are secured by non-adlorm revenues of the city, that being the public improvement note and the capital improvement note. One is secured by adlorm revenues, and we'll get more into that aspects of adlorm versus non-adlorm as part of this presentation. And those are your GO bonds that were, I think, originally done in 2005 and then refinanced in 2015. And then you have one water and sewer financing outstanding as well. And you can see in this chart that all of this debt will be extinguished really by 2029. So not only do you have a little bit of debt, it also has a fairly rapid amortization and for the most part also has very low interest rates on it, as you can see here in the table. So again, a very conservative debt portfolio with minimal debt, which really puts you at a good starting point when you're looking at capital projects moving forward. Going to the next slide, again, as I mentioned before, like any local government, there's just a myriad of capital projects, many of which were talked about in the presentation that we just saw that the city has to fund, and you have to prioritize those projects. We understand one of the larger ones is a potential new public safety facility, which is really what we're focused on here in terms of our presentation. And just to go over why cities issue debt, which I think for most people is going to be, you know, information you all know, large capital projects often can't be broken down into phases. So you can't really wait for the time to collect all the funds to take care of the project at one point in time. So generally, you have to finance the cost of that, just like you would finance your home if you were out buying a home. That's particularly highlighted by the next bullet that talks about mitigating rising construction costs. That's very important in today's environment whereby construction costs are escalating enormously in the current environment. So if you wait to collect funds to build a project, by the time you collect the funds, sometimes the project would cost much more. So funding it upfront with debt that even would pay interest on it can potentially save you money over the life of the financing. The other potential element of that is ratepayer, taxpayer equity. So you want to make sure those citizens that are benefiting from the use of the project are helping pay for the cost of the project. So if you tried to pay for projects on a pay-as-you-go basis, the current citizens are going to bear the full brunt of that cost versus if you finance it over a period of time, say 10, 20, or 30 years, future generations of citizens can help pay for that project as well. And the final element we talk about is, you know, historically speaking, interest rates are low for local governments because you all can borrow on a tax-exempt basis for general capital projects. They are somewhat higher than they were two years ago, but historically speaking, tax-exempt interest rates are still fairly attractive from a borrowing rate. With that in mind as to why you might borrow, the next set of bullets talk about how local governments borrow. And there's two general types of bonds that local governments do, and the city has actually taken advantage of both of those in the past. The first being a revenue bond. And the revenue bond is actually secured by a specific source of non-adlorm revenues. And that's very important, the fact that it's non-adlorm revenues. And those can either be within the enterprise fund, like a water and sewer revenue, or they can be in the general fund, like a sales tax or a franchise fee or something of that nature. So revenue bonds are secured by generally existing sources of non-adlorm revenues within the city. And they can actually be put in place with just a simple majority vote of the city council to move forward. The other type of bond that is often done in the state of Florida is a general obligation bond. And that is different in the fact that it's secured by adlorm taxes. So revenue bonds are non-adlorm, general obligation bonds are adlorm taxes. And in the state of Florida, you actually have to get voter approval from your citizens to issue general obligation bonds. So whereas a revenue bond can be done with just city council approval, a general obligation bond has to be approved by the voters. And within that referendum, which we'll talk about as part of this presentation, they're agreeing to add a debt service millage levy to their tax bill. So that actually generates additional revenues to pay for the debt service above and beyond your existing sources within your general fund. To dig into the revenue bonds just a little bit more in terms of sort of how they're structured, whenever a revenue bond is issued, there's really two tests that need to be met in order to issue the bonds. I mentioned, obviously, city council approval before, but we have a legal sort of bonding capacity element and then a budget capacity element. So, and those are two very different things. From a legal perspective, you just have to have a certain coverage ratio of non-adlorm revenues as compared to debt service, and legally, you can move forward with a revenue bond issue. And generally, that legal bonding capacity is at a much higher level than what we call budget capacity. And that means what you can actually afford to pay back. So you have a large source of non-adlorm revenues, many of which, most of which are actually being used to operate the city. You can get credit for those from a legal perspective, but from a budget perspective, those revenues are already being used for a certain purpose and aren't necessarily available to pay debt service. I liken it to having a credit card where you might have, say, a $20,000 credit limit. That doesn't necessarily mean you can afford to put $20,000 on that credit card because you do not have the capacity to pay that back over time. So really, for parts of this presentation, you know, from talking with your staff and understanding your budget, there's very little additional ongoing non-adlorm revenues to support a long-term debt over the next 20 or 30 years because those revenues are being used for other priorities of the city, operating the city, paying for capital projects on a pay-as-you-go basis. So we're really not focused as much on the revenue bond element of this presentation, but did want to mention it in case there was questions about it. What we're more focused on in terms of potentially funding a public safety facility is the ability to do general obligation bonds. And as I mentioned, the one caveat to that is, of course, you need to have the voters support that project via a referendum. And we've seen historically and more recently, general obligation bonds are much more accepted or approved when they're for things that improve, you know, the parks and recreation, public safety and things like that that improve, you know, quality of life within a community. So, you know, you really have to be specific about what project you're going to finance. And public for safety is something we see often asked for in terms of a GEO referendum. Again, I mentioned before, the city does have a general obligation bond outstanding. That was done in 2005. It was financed in 2015. And it actually has two more years left on it. So the tax bill that will go out in November of 2023 and the tax bill that will go out in November of 2024, you currently levy about .25 mils worth of debt service, which was approved by the voters back in 2005. And that millage levy was probably much higher than that when you actually did the referendum. But as the tax base grows, that millage levy goes down. So keep in mind when we're talking about a potential new financing, that that .25 mils will actually be rolling off of the tax bill for those citizens in two more years. So to the extent that you approved a new GEO referendum, that would actually help offset some of the additional costs to the citizens on an ongoing basis. And just to give you some perspective, that .25 mils, if it would continue out for another 20 or 30 years, would generate about $9 million on a 20-year levy and $12 million on a 30-year levy. So if you look at it in the sense of if we just keep neutral to where the city is now moving forward, that is what you could actually generate. Obviously, $9 or $12 million is not going to fund the cost of a new public safety facility. So there would be additional millage levy above and beyond what the city is currently levying to support that type of financing. And again, we don't have the potential cost of the facility at this point, but did want to provide some element of different options to show you what the potential impact would be on a citizen at different millage levies and different terms. And we have a model that allows us to run sensitivity on all of these elements, including what value homeowner property has. So for purposes of the table that's on this chart, which I hope you all, again, can see in front of you, is we ran a 20- and a 30-year scenario, and we looked at 25, 50, and a $75 million project. Again, not suggesting that that's what the city is going to do. I'm just trying to give you a scale of what it might be in terms of an impact, in terms of an overall millage levy on the tax bill, and how that might equate to an individual property owner that owns a $200,000 taxable assessed value home. So as you can see on the table, if the city did a 20-year referendum for $25 million, that would be about a .67 mil levy on the tax bill, which would be about $134 a year for 20 years for a citizen that owns a $200,000 home. Obviously, a more expensive home, the levy goes up. A less expensive home, the levy goes down. But it would equate to .67 mils for every property owner. And you can see down there, 50 and 75 million. The same thing in terms of 1.34 mils and a little over 2 mils for that larger project. Financing over a 30-year term lowers your annual payments, so reduces that millage levy as well as the impact on the property owner, but stretches that payment out and impacts them for a 30-year period. Again, we're not here to suggest that that's what the cost of a facility would be. That's not necessarily our job as the financial advisor, but just to give you a sense of what the potential impact would be and if the city does move forward with this type of project, we would be in a position to provide different scenarios that were more specific to that exact project over different repayment terms, if that was you all's desire. And then the final slide I have here, again, this is completely illustrative, not suggesting that March 2024 would be the date to hold this type of referendum, but I did want to lay out what a timeline might look like if you all were seeking voter approval March 2024. It can be done really at any general election you all have. You can schedule special elections for things like this, albeit at a cost. But this is just to give you a general sense of what the lead-up to any type of referendum might be. So again, if you were looking March 2024, you would be spending the time from now over the next several months really developing the projects to be financed, running the taxpayer analysis similar to what we showed before, and really looking at, you know, what amounts would be needed to fund a project like this. All with the need to have some type of potential workshop with you all to discuss all of the different elements and then get some direction that you all would want to move forward with scheduling the referendum. And if that is the case, then the city attorney and your bond council would prepare a resolution that actually calls for that referendum. And there are specific things that would need to be within that resolution. You would need to have a pretty detailed project scope because you want the voters to know what they're actually going to be approving. You would need to have the ballot question, which lays out sort of what you're asking them to do. And there's word limits on what that ballot question can entail. It would talk about the project, the term of repayment, and things like that. And then you also have to lay out the referendum date. So I know Richard's probably very familiar with all the requirements that would need to go in such a referendum resolution, but he would be drafting that along with bond council. And then that would be considered by you as the city council at a date, say, in October of 2023, if the referendum was in March of 2024. So again, once that is approved, there's a series of advertisements that must be put into the newspaper to make citizens aware of the referendum. And then the referendum would be held. Obviously, if it's not approved, nothing would happen. But if it is approved and the city would be able to issue those bonds, there's also what we call the bond validation process that you might be recommended to go through, which would be a legal proceeding that just allows the courts to say the referendum was held in concurrence with all of the required, you know, legal regulations. And then you would really be in a position to issue bonds depending on when the project cost or the project funding would be needed. So you wouldn't necessarily have to issue bonds immediately after the referendum. It's more when the actual project would begin and when you would actually need funding. And again, this is all illustrative. I don't want to stand up here and suggest to you that we're recommending that you do a referendum in March of 2024, just trying to lay out for you all what it would look like if that was the city's desire. And obviously, if it's a different date, these dates just adjust accordingly. But it gives you a sequence of the steps that need to get done. And again, with that, again, this was just sort of initial presentation to give you all a sense of options that were out there, what might be viable from a general obligation bond perspective. And we're happy to address any questions that you all might have at this point.
Counsel, any questions? I think it's preliminary enough that it's difficult to ask questions. But I would say, or certainly, I think the wonderment of anybody who hears this is you've done these before, I'm sure. What kind of timeframe when somebody says, okay, this is what we want to do? And believe me, I'm like you. We're not saying we got any dates or anything. There's nothing. But that being said, what kind of timeframe does it take from beginning to end? You know, kind of the vision to some of the things you said here. Have you seen some of these?
We've done plenty of these. We've had a number of issuers that actually, this past March, that approved these types of GEO referendums. And I'll tell you, if they're done right, they take probably at least a year in planning because you really want to get, if not more, you really want to make sure, you know, the council's on board with the project, everybody's supportive of the project, there are actual firms that can come in and help you market these types of things. And I use that term a little bit loosely because there are legal restrictions on, you know, you all can't advocate one way or another. The city can provide facts related to the referendum, what the project's going to be, how much it might cost, but you can't really advocate. But there are like chambers of commerce that can advocate on your behalf and things like that. So yeah, I think it takes a good year, probably more, to actually plan this type of thing, understand the cost of the project, and get the entire referendum in place. And then you're talking probably another, you know, 90, 120 days or more after that to actually issue the bond. So, you know, it's, I think, you know, now is a good time to be starting this conversation on a very preliminary basis if this is something you think you're going to want to do over the next, you know, 12 to 24 months.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Any last time for questions? No, I see none. Thank you very much. Well done. Appreciate it. City Manager.
Thanks, Jerry. The next item is item 4H, which is a draft, or the presentation of the Sustainability Action Plan. And Rachel Mueller will be providing that to council.
Hi, it's a very exciting evening here in Titusville. Tonight at the 6:30 meeting, you will have the Sustainability Action Plan up for adoption under New Business. And before we get to that meeting, we wanted to give you guys an opportunity to understand what we've been working on the last few months in preparation for the adoption of the Sustainability Action Plan. So first, we'll go over a brief overview of everything we've been able to accomplish so far, some of the new work we've done on the implementation matrix, and then we can look ahead and see what are some of the low-hanging fruits that we can start getting ready for. So I'll be very brief, but just as a summary and a little refresher since it was a little while ago. But the Phase 1 of the Sustainability Action Plan was the public outreach component of the plan to kind of get the community involved and understanding of what city council is embarking on. We did a survey. We had over 100 responses. We did seven presentations to all the different boards and commissions that report to the city council, as well as some external presentations as well. We hosted one stakeholder meeting, one public workshop, one pop-up event, and had almost 2,000 visits to the website to promote the Sustainability Action Plan. And there are some photos to show of all the events that happened under Phase 1. So after Phase 1, we went to Phase 2, which we took all of the feedback from the community, and we started to develop the focus areas, the objectives, goals, and the action items of the plan, as well as look at some of the current initiatives that the city is accomplishing that falls within the realm of sustainability. So that's all summarized within Phase 2. And there were six focus areas that were decided upon, seven goals, 28 objectives, and 87 action items. So there's a lot to accomplish to continue to further sustainability within the city of Titusville. And that's where we go into Phase 3. How are we going to? How are we going to implement the action plan? So Phase 3 focused on finding concrete solutions for how we go forward with implementing the Sustainability Action Plan in set timeframes. So right here on this slide is a how to read the implementation matrix to kind of guide you when you look through the plan and you get to this part at the very bottom of the plan. So I'll start with saying that the first thing to notice is that on the top of each page, you are going to have the focus area so that you know which section of the plan that you are looking in. And then you have the action items that are outlined within each focus area. And if you look at the very top ribbon, there are some things to note. So the one of the first ones is the implementation tool, and that's how each action item would get accomplished. And then you have the acting agencies. So we list a lead and support acting agency, and those are the anticipated departments within the city, and then some of our supporting agencies that will help us to implement the action items. And then following the agencies, we have the estimated timeframe. And so the estimated timeframes are done on an ongoing short term, which is zero to five years, medium term, which is five to 10 years, and then long term, 10 to 15 years. So those are the estimated timeframes. And then following that is the estimated cost, and so that's either $1 sign, $2 signs, or $3 signs. And so $1 sign represents anything up to $25,000. $2 signs is $25,000 to $50,000, or $100,000, I'm sorry. And then the last one, $3 signs would be anything above $100,000. And these are all just estimates. At the bottom of each page on the implementation matrix, it clearly states that this is all estimates and based on anticipated workload of city staff for any given year. And then finally, the very last, the very last column of the implementation matrix are the focus area co-benefits. And those are just little images of the different focus areas to kind of give you a better representation of the interconnections within sustainability. A lot of the, a lot of the action items don't just benefit the aforementioned focus area, but there are also some co-benefits, and we want to point those out because sustainability is really interconnected. So that helps guide you in your thinking of what are the benefits of each of the action items. So that's how you read the implementation matrix. And then from there, we wanted to define some of the words for you that are used within the implementation matrix. I'll try to be brief on these definitions, but I just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to see what the definitions are, to get a better understanding of the different tools that will be utilized to implement the Sustainability Action Plan. So the first one that's mentioned in the document is called a planning document, and this is a method that we use as planners to capture the process, design, and planning recommendations for a community effort to address a specific policy topic. And then the next one that was mentioned is a partnership. It's either a formal or informal arrangement between two or more parties to manage and/or operate a program. For example, in the previous slide, under community and livability, one of the first things we mention is to partner with Brevard County to promote, to promote community and livability within Titusville. And then we have incentives, a tool that local governments use to entice developers or other actors to provide a public good. Land development regulations is another common tool that we use as planners, and specific and detailed provisions necessary or desirable to implement the city's adopted comprehensive plan. Infrastructure improvements, the process of upgrading or repairing existing infrastructure. Education and outreach, activities and opportunities to disseminate information to the public that promotes the goals and objectives of sustainability. And then finally, the last three, online interactive database. Those are some of the more online tools that we use to provide information to the public, agreements and resolutions, and programs and policies also will help us to implement the Sustainability Action Plan. So those are the nine implementation tools that are mentioned in the implementation matrix. All right, so where do we go from here? When the sustainability plan is up for adoption, what does that mean? I wanted to focus my presentation on some of the short-term accomplishments, some of the low-hanging fruit that we can accomplish within the first five years and some of our ongoing efforts. So within community and livability, some of the things that are mentioned in the plan that could be accomplished in the first five years include incentives for healthful food retailers to be located in underserved areas, and to develop a strategic recommendation for improving housing affordability within Titusville. Under ecosystem and resiliency, to develop an urban forestry management plan and implement more green infrastructure projects. And energy and infrastructure, to help deploy a green municipal fleet and start planning for more fuel-efficient vehicles, electric vehicles, and other vehicles that would be within the municipal fleet. To develop an educational campaign to reduce household energy consumption. Under the water focus area, identify high-consumption operations and target water conservation efforts. And to develop protocols for water quality threats and water hazard mitigation. This one is especially poignant today as we just proclaimed that is Water Conservation Month. Smart Growth, to create great green building toolkit for new construction and existing buildings, and to adopt green building incentives. And then finally, in the last focus area, Sustainable Economy, to develop a sustainable purchasing policy of recommended consumer products, and then consumable products for the city. And then finally, to develop a green business voluntary program to recognize businesses committed to sustainability. So that is just a snapshot of some of the low-hanging fruit, some of the things that have been identified to be accomplished within the first five years. And I'm really proud to say that we've already done the work to reach out to a lot of the supporting agencies that we've identified in the plan and have already brought them in, and they're really excited to see Titusville pursue these sustainability goals and are ready to work with us to get some of these low-hanging fruits accomplished. And I want to go back, if I can, to this Phase 2 summary where I call out there are the 87 action items, and on this final note, that over 50 of those action items are either considered an ongoing action item or a short-term action item. So a lot of these things can be accomplished relatively easily, not easily, relatively soon, and within the next five years, if we dedicate the resources to pursuing the action items within the Sustainability Plan. And with that, I hope I stayed within my time constraints, and if you have any questions for me, I am here to answer them.
If you had a time constraint, I didn't know it. But that being said, and I'm not surprised, I'm very impressed with the way that you have another career coming and another part of chapter of your life coming, and you're going to go out strong and finish this strong. And I just can't help but say that. So been doing a lot of things in education and sector for a long time, and it's always something to watch somebody who's on their last day, last week, whatever it may be, and still has the pedal to the metal, and I appreciate that. Yeah, I would say too. That being said, other than that, all I can say is amazing, fantastic. I remember when we first started. I remember when you were just seeking all you could seek, anywhere you could seek it. I was just very impressed with you and your team, and now look at this laid out so nice and enviable. Outstanding job. So now, if you want, you can stay five more years and see what happens in the first five here. So thank you very much. Member Nelson.
You know, we could handcuff her to the desk.
I don't know. We got those guys over there, maybe.
They might loan me some handcuffs. So you know you made me very happy. I mean, this whole plan is just fantastic. What do you think is the first step we should take?
I think a lot of the items that I highlighted in the PowerPoint are some of the first steps to take. I think having those initial conversations, once the plan is adopted with the different stakeholders that are identified, and start working with them to see what resources are available. Some other first steps, one of the first thing, one of the first action items that's mentioned is to develop a public engagement guide and to start getting ahead on the education and outreach, because, you know, sustainability is most, more than anything else, it's a mindset on how we approach our everyday actions. And so, you know, it's not just something that the city does, but it should be something that the whole community takes ownership of. So getting ahead on those education and outreach action items would be, I think, would be a really good first step.
Great. You did a great job.
Yes, yes, yes. Member Stokoe.
Yep. I appreciate how logical this is. Like, you started with Phase 1, and just to see the progress of how this has been building to this point, and then to have you leave is quite disappointing. But I do feel like you did a lot of the bulk of the work, and then that's my question, I guess, for Brad, since we do know that she is leaving. I would just assume that when we hopefully get a new person, that they would be able to come in and just kind of pick up and continue on with what we have already.
Yes, I think Rachel's laid it out for her successor fairly well.
Yeah, so, just want to say thank you. Good luck. I kind of want to give back the employee of the month since you're leaving, but, in order to get it, you have to stay, Rachel.
Yes.
But no, thank you. This is very, this is probably one of the best presentations, just the way it's all organized, the cost, who needs to be involved. Excellent job.
And to play off of Member Stokoe there, and I think, and what Brad said, I think that the way you have laid this out, it's a map for whoever follows you. That, along with your cell phone number, will be perfect. So again, anything else from counsel on that? I've seen none. So all I can say is thank you very much, and we appreciate you. And I hope that, I'm half kidding, but I'm half serious too. I hope that if we have a question, we can call you and say, hey, what do you mean by that? So thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Senator Madam.
On to item I, which is the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. The city's consultant, Kimberly Horn and Associates, will present their ideas for the draft amendments to the future land use, the transportation and housing elements of the comprehensive plan, and changes to the land development regulations to help implement the amendments.
And counsel, we have Brian Cannon and Eliza Giuliano with Cannon Associates, now with Kimberly Horn, here to give you a new, more recent update to the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code Regulation project. They will follow up with a final presentation in May, and then the project will culminate with their involvement with transmittal hearings of comp plan amendments later this summer.
Thank you, and it's good to see you two again. Appreciate it. Mayor and counsel, good evening and pleasure to be here again. Thank you.
Same. Pleasure to be here. So we're following up on our previous meeting and getting into a little more detail about the approach to creating change in the three areas that we've been discussing throughout this process, which are downtown, west Titusville, west downtown, and the major gateways and corridors. So we're going to start with downtown and west downtown, or what we're referring to here as UMU. That's essentially synonymous with the majority of west downtown has the UMU Urban Mixed Use Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use District. So where we're really focused for this portion is identifying how we, these areas have already been identified as a special place in the comprehensive plan through that DMU and UMU designation. So we're identifying how we need to amend those policies and the related zoning districts to make them more implementable and to implement the specific proposals that we've been discussing. So with respect to the downtown mixed-use standards, this is really more related to the zoning level standards. We're looking at strengthening the standards that essentially provide a pedestrian-oriented environment. So that means not just allowing, but requiring that buildings be pulled up close to the street, to give that main street feel that the older buildings in downtown Titusville have. So as you're walking by them, they send you the signal that this is a place that is intended to be walked to, as opposed to a new suburban area where that's not the message that's sent because that's not the expectation. But in downtown Titusville, that should be the expectation. And that also comes with, doesn't mean where the parking goes and certain landscape and hardscape requirements. And that's, like I said, more at the zoning level. The other piece here is the intensity and density of development that will be managed through, or proposing to manage through an overlay. So both for the UMU and the downtown area, there, the, there's a need for a higher density to accommodate the type of development that's being envisioned than what is currently allowed in the comprehensive plan. Now, what we don't want to do is say that density is just allowed everywhere all the time, because that doesn't necessarily meet the goals of the plan either. What that presents is an opportunity to collaborate with people who want to come and invest in the city and say, if you want to make a bigger investment with more units, more housing units than were anticipated in the current comprehensive plan, what needs to meet that? How do we need to meet that in terms of having a higher level of investment in the public realm, as well as that private investment? So that includes things like street scapeing and other community benefits that can be negotiated through this overlay process. So I'm going to hand it over to Brian, to Delmore.
Thanks, Eliza. So I thought we'd just start with a little bit of recap from the last meeting. So we will start off at the same place. You know, we've thought about this project as long-term, medium-term, and short-term, and we're very interested in short-term, which versus, you know, what makes it dynamic? If we can get something done near-term, it starts to change the whole attitude about Titusville and bring people downtown and make it more of an exciting place. So this slide is what we shared with you last time. We focused on Mariner's Way as a very near-term project that's very doable, and it's for a lot of reasons. We'll visit that a little bit more. And by the way, if I, you know, if you need any questions in the middle of this, I'd like to be a little bit informal, just interrupt. We'd be happy with that.
Thank you, thank you.
But that parcel, you have a lot of control over that parcel, so it makes it easy. We don't have to wait for a lot of other things to happen. Palm Avenue, we've identified is the future main street of Titusville, and that's going to be a nice walkable, calm street with on-street parking and a lot of redevelopment activities starting maybe with the Arts Center and being able to introduce some, what we call, missing middle housing, that we'll show you a lot more about later. And then I wanted to refresh this in your minds. This was one of the images in the very first work we did that just got people super excited. It was the idea of, you know, we've got a pedestrian realm on a beautiful park and hopefully on the water, and we think that's possible. And so that has led us to really focus on Mariner's Way. You know, you own the street, so there's no acquisition involved. You own all the property. There's no acquisition involved there either. It's a waterfront location, and it's downtown, and it's very, could be a very dynamic setting for gathering places and local events. And what's nice about it is you all recognize that, so in each one of the meetings we had with you, everybody felt the same way about it. And the other thing that excites us about it is it can be phased. It can grow over time. It can start in a modest way and then become something special. So this, that's, you know, what I've been talking about, and on Mariner's Way, by the way, we can get quite a lot of parking, so we've been very careful to balance parking so we're not short of parking, because that was a question that came up earlier. Let's see if I can get this to turn. Okay. So this is the idea that by just starting to create the park, and there's some beautiful trees there already, which is wonderful, we can introduce food trucks, and they can be parked on that street and create that activity, and it's something that can happen quite easily. And then we could maybe build a pavilion and some, you know, restrooms. And then over time, the food trucks can give way to real buildings and new businesses. So we see this as a wonderful short-term, medium-term, and long-term development opportunity that can really enhance downtown. Okay, so Eliza and Brad and I have spent a lot of time trying to understand the best way to deal with zoning and the future land use in the downtown and in the UMU area. And please jump in on this whenever, either one of you, whenever we need to. But you'll notice that the block patterns and the parcels are very similar in both of these areas, so they're not that different. We see the differentiation really being that in the downtown, maybe the building heights are five stories, up to five, but maybe in this area, it's up to three. So there's a difference in intensity, but the patterns are more or less the same, and we want to make really clear that we are very favorable to larger projects when there's larger sites, because there was some confusion in to larger projects when there's larger sites, because there was some confusion in one of our presentations when we talked about how much the pattern is small sites, and we want to deal with small sites, because we can't wait for all of those to be, you know, acquired by somebody, be it a long wait. But wherever there's a big site, we're very excited to see a bigger project, which will enhance downtown. So, we've extended the UMU area a little bit more to the west, because we thought, for example, on Park... That Park Street, it'd be nice to match it on both sides, so, you know, it's not one side and the other side's different. And we considered taking it down further, but we went backwards and retained the downtown core that's on South Street. I'm sorry. Yeah. So, thanks. So, that shows a little modification to that map. This is not finished, and it's still in process. And then, as you know, and Eliza explained, the real value that we're striving for is to make great streets. Great streets add a lot of value, and they're pedestrian-friendly, and that's a little bit of what's missing in some of our big streets today. So, we start looking at the streets, and we've looked at Palm Avenue, which is going to be your new Main Street, that can, you know, enlighten and enhance the Arts District, and where it goes up to Garden Street could maybe be an area for some early development of some, what we call, missing middle housing, and we'll explain that, too. And we've got Garden, Main, and South Street. So, you saw these images last time, but now what we want to show you is how they could work. So, sometimes the right-of-way is narrow, and this is, you know, this is Palm Avenue. I think it's a 50-foot right-of-way. So, we need some extra land to make that 15-to-17-foot public realm that's really special, makes a Main Street. And that we see happening by incentivizing people to cooperate in... on a half-block or a full-block, working in partnership with the city, where they give some, and the city does something, and it's worked out in a deal. And that's going to be what we explain in the next round, when we're talking about how to implement these overlay districts. So, that's our idea of Palm Avenue with beautiful street trees, on-street parking, a nice pedestrian realm that, you know, up against the building that's 15 to 17 feet, really well landscaped. And the buildings, you know, would typically be, you know, set back when they go above two stories. That also helps create a very friendly street.
And if I can just jump in on that a little bit. So, just to reiterate what Brian is saying here in terms of how the overlay piece works, the extra... I mean, there's lots of buildings that will be set back at least 10 feet regardless of the overlay district, but particularly where people are taking advantage of the extra development potential in the overlay district, there would be expectations around what happens in that 10-feet-on-private property in return for that increase in development potential that they're getting.
Yeah, exactly. So, it's a partnership, and that's how we think the overlays work. It's not mandatory. It's an incentive-based idea. This is Garden Street, and it's going to be changed in a good way, and you've seen these slides before. So, Garden Street's good, because we've got 80 feet this time, and so, we don't actually have to fight too hard to get that extra distance, the 15 feet, I think, my eyes are any good, is already there. And this shows it could be a, you know, five-story building. It could be a three-story building. Each time, the setback happens so that they feel better when you're walking down the street.
And the change here really comes from working with FDOT on the study that we expect to reconfigure that street. So, the... What's gained here is what's coming out of moving from four moving lanes to two moving lanes, and giving that space back to support the community in terms of walkability and landscaping, rather than just to support through traffic.
So, Garden Street's a nice solution, because we've got enough right-of-way to make this happen. And then, on South Street, it's a 100-foot right-of-way, but it's a bigger street. So, there, we have to take... We get six feet anyway, but we need to get another 10 feet. So, these are all things that are moving parts, if you will, and, you know, get worked out as a developer comes in, and there's a chance to partner with the city and make these things happen. So, we've talked to you before about missing middle housing, and we also like housing that can be mixed-use, so it's not totally residential if it's on the right street. And I invite you to jump in if you need to here, but we've looked at the ownership patterns, because... And that's why it's... That's why things have been moving a little bit slow in the city, is that very fragmented ownership in many places, both in the UMU and DMU. So, it's hard to get it all assembled into, you know, large parcels. Now, there are some large parcels. There's one down in the bottom left-hand that's about two and a half acres. It's a perfect large parcel. And we've explored some of these, so you can get a sense of what can happen on large, medium, and very small parcels. So, that's what that map shows. It shows who's, you know, who owns a piece in common, and it does show there's quite a lot of church properties, and it shows in gray the public properties, so that I think the Housing Authority is quite active in some of these areas. And so, this... Some of these are lots of vacant, so hopefully they're near-term opportunities. And this is a study we did up on Garden Street and Palm Avenue, showing how this development pattern can happen piece by piece, so to speak. Doesn't have to happen all at once, and this pattern could also happen in West Town. And so, these little topologies are beautiful. They allow three units, and the ground floor can convert to a studio over time. It doesn't have to start. It can start as a small rental studio. So, this is a very important idea, because you can't always build one of these and assume that someone's going to put a restaurant in on the ground floor. So... But we know that we can put a rental studio in there for a while. So, that's a topology we've explored in another city, and it seems to be well-received. Eliza, I think, has explained this before. Do you want to talk about this one, missing middle?
Yeah, I mean, the short version is, we're very good at producing in Florida, large subdivisions of single-family communities, and we're pretty good at producing apartment buildings, but there's a whole historic range of housing typologies that have existed historically that we're not very good at building right now, and a lot of that is driven by regulation.
So, thank you. So, we started to try to illustrate this, you know, a little bit more detail, and a little more graphic, so you could follow it a little easier. One of the issues that we see, which we need some... So, you know, there's a lot of... Getting a new project approved. And so, we've taken a conservative view. We don't know how the stormwater solution's going to work, but we're saying it may have to be worked in the early stages on-site. So, this diagram shows how, you know, on a typical 50-by-100-foot site, for example, a small cottage could be built and permit the stormwater on the property. So, this is something we want to explore with your engineers in a lot more detail fairly soon, because it does affect how we write the code and how we develop the standards. But you can see some of these typical topologies that are missing middle topologies and/or mixed-use, that we've envisioned on various sites that range from two and a half acres to half an acre, all the way down to, you know, a fraction of an acre. And so, we studied three sites, a large, a medium, and a small. And this one is a topology where it's a courtyard building. It doesn't appear very often in this state, but it's very well-used in other places. It's very street-friendly, if you look at the images on the right side. And we've left the area in the middle open for stormwater, and then later, that maybe could be filled in once there's a more regional stormwater system. And then, this shows the mixed-use ones that can be on a 50-by-140-foot lot. So, these can happen, you know, incrementally as somebody has the interest in doing it. And this gets high density. Some of these get, you know, 15 to 17 units an acre. And then, here, we're putting two cottages on that block and having the parking on the street. So, that's also possible, because these streets, as you know from the cross-sections, have parking, have lots of parking. And then, Susan, do you want to chat on this?
Yeah, so shifting gears into our last section here, we've talked about downtown. We've talked about the neighborhood west of downtown, and now we're going to shift back to the corridors, which we're calling gateways, because they are important to the public face of the city. And the solution here is, again, two-tiered. So, on the base level, making sure that the standards, no matter what type of development is coming in, are consistent with the vision of the city for a cohesive landscape, trees, signage, and basic connectivity between sites for people walking, biking, or driving. And then, for the somewhat rare site where someone is willing to make a bigger investment, and there's a site that's appropriate, we, again, would be using an overlay mechanism to allow, for instance, a mixed-use development, and that would come with more development opportunity. It would also come with more... higher standards to meet that need of a walk... highly... more highly walkable condition created by that denser development.
So, you know, once in a while, you find a nice big site. This one's 20 acres. So, this gives all kinds of opportunities that are wonderful, to enhance the street, create a walkable environment along that Main Street with a lot of street trees. Buildings are pulled up to the street, but not always. Like, if it's a food store, they want the parking field in front of the food store, and that's what we're showing here. And you can introduce some small cottage housing in the back, or more intense multifamily apartment developments with parking structures. So, that's just the menu. So, all of these examples that we've shown tonight, we're going to use those, if you like them, and, you know, we're working closely with Brad on this, to develop these new standards. And then, the standards are important, because if the standards aren't calibrated to allow this to happen, then it makes it just that much harder for anybody to come in and want to make the investment. So, that's kind of where we are at this point. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
First of all, it's probably the most creative and vision meeting I've ever been in. All the different things have a vision and a plan, and this is certainly kind of a highlight. I just... I'm impressed with your vision. I'm impressed with your thought, because it has to be a vision. I mean, and I know... I remember talking before, and you needed to go see some places to get a vision. And I'm just looking at these drawings and these thoughts, and it's like, you know, I'm very impressed. And again, I'm not saying that we're going to open the door tomorrow and wake up from our dream, and it's going to be there. But I think you have to start somewhere, and most every idea starts with a vision. And I appreciate your vision. I appreciate the reality you've brought to it. I'm impressed with the fact that so many of these pictures you had had increased trees, and I know that's a big deal for all of us and many of us, and it looks so nice. And we talked recently, and I actually met with some people in TEC to get a better understanding of a future canopy. Well, obviously, you are part of the future of the canopy, because I think that Garden Street design or our design looks very much like there's a canopy out there. So, overall, I want to thank you for your efforts and your creativity and your vision, and I certainly hope it's one that we can grab hold of in some way, shape, or form. Council, is there anything you'd like to say? I guess I said more than enough, huh?
Thank you, Mayor, and we appreciate that.
Well, I do. I want to thank you, and I'm just excited to... I like to keep flipping back to these and think, "Man, that's how you get to where you need to go. You envision it." And now that we have some sort of a vision, we get as close to that or some part of that that we can.
And then, Eliza's going to do the hard work and figure out how to make it work.
Yeah, I can sit up and talk vision all day, can't I? So, anyway, thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Brad?
Mayor, I just have one question. My microphone crashed out a little bit over there.
Oh, okay.
I just want to make you aware that your next meeting is a little bit more detailed, but beware, what the group here has done is presented to you some ideas and concepts to help inform decisions that were... Some hard choices that we're going to bring before you, as far as new comprehensive plan policies to allow these kinds of ideas, and some code changes as well. And it was already mentioned of an overlay, so that's a tool, it's a zoning tool, that we might bring before you to allow for these kinds of ideas and kinds of development patterns that do require you to make decisions as far as increasing density in some areas, potentially. So, we'll bring this back to you with a little bit more detail, and then, again, in the summertime, you'll see those comprehensive plan policies.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Mayor.
Guys, thank you. Appreciate you. And that brings us to petitions or requests. City Manager, is there anything else before that? Okay, petitions or requests for Meeting One.
Let me just respond to this really quickly before these people leave the room. Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street. I think this vision is a nightmare for what is being called West Titusville, the area to the west of the railroad tracks, between South Street and Maine especially, because there's already a cement factory and a gas company and a junkyard and some other industry and businesses there, which, you know, we all coexist. But this... I can't think of a single three-story building in that area, and I'm wondering where all these charts and pictures and visions of three-story apartment complex, multiple, high-density. This is a very established neighborhood. It's an old neighborhood. It does not need to be gentrified in this direction. We have got a vision... Excuse me, I didn't mean to wear this up here, but the Historic Preservation Board has had an idea for helping with the Neighborhood Services over there and their CDBG grant to get a neighborhood identity, and it does not fit anything that this gentleman has presented for this West Titusville area. I've looked through my calendar, searching for when that meeting was, that the public had input. I don't recall this kind of input coming from the public at that meeting. I'm extremely upset, and I will collect myself and give proper, proper response to this as this plan is developed and as we look to the future for West Titusville.
Here, hold still, hold still, hold still. And again, when you see a vision, that's just what it is. It's a vision. Part of the good part about that, for those who might be upset, is it's a vision. I would... And maybe I'll talk to you more later.
Yeah, we should.
But the Garden Street aspect of that...
That's fine. It's a big industrial area, and I don't know where on Palm he's going to get 10 more feet to do all these things.
I question that, too. That's part of a vision, because I don't have that vision. But, yeah, that was a question, but I like the thought. And again, like I said, I love the... What I saw on Garden Street with these trees and canopy-looking things, and... But and again, I don't think that when we look at this, we say, "Well, there's a plan." I'm not even calling it a plan.
I hope not.
I would call it a vision, and there are certain areas, like I said, grab part of the things that can work and let go of the things that can't. And that's about as technical as I can get on that.
Thank you.
Okay?
I'll calm down.
No, no, no. I appreciate your passion. You stay who you are. You good?
I was going to say, I agree with you, Mayor, because, excuse me, when you guys were talking about Palm Avenue, I'm like, those are story buildings.
Yeah, we won't write away those.
You can't tear things down to widen that street. You know, Garden Street, South Street, Highway 50. Yeah, that might be great.
And maybe as we get more specific in the next meeting, we say that, and that's why I use the term "vision." There's a great vision there, and I don't want you to walk out of here feeling like there's not. But there's some of that vision. It's like, "I don't know. That's going to be good."
So, we'll see what you guys come... They come up with, and then we'll...
You know, I lament the fact that we're not Winter Park, Florida, or even now, the darling little winter garden. I lament the fact that we don't have a Main Street America program here, that we don't really have enough of a Main Street to have the program, as I see the things they're doing, like over in the Mills District area in Orlando and down in O'Gale, the Art District there. I have great hopes for our Julia Street Art District. I'm a performing artist myself. I look forward to that. So, I don't mean to rain on your parade and dump on your dreams. I just don't see it for my community. I didn't hear anything like that from any of my neighbors and colleagues in the West Titusville area. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Next up. Arm wrestle.
No, it wins. Casey Nance, Maryland Avenue. I want to speak to you about the Sustainability Action Plan now, rather than at the 6:30 meeting.
Please, thank you.
Okay. It's going to be late, and you'll be ready to go home. This is... The Sustainability Action Plan, the Concept Plan for an Urban Forestry Program, and the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Plan could work hand-in-hand to provide many benefits to residents. The Sustainability Action Plan includes initiative to reduce greenhouse gases, including carbon dioxide. Trees absorb carbon dioxide emissions that drive global warming. The Concept Plan for an Urban Forestry Program calls for the planting of street trees in Titusville. These street trees would not only... These street trees would not only reduce carbon dioxide emitted by cars, but reduce temperatures and residents' vulnerability to extreme heat events. The Sustainability Action Plan includes a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Action Plan initiative. This NRSA plan indicates that, quote, "It is desirable to create an urban forestry feel in the NRSA. Trees and parks along streets between the curb and sidewalk create this feel. The city and residents should come together to re-tree and maintain those areas lacking trees. The city should consider continuing the Adopt a Tree Program." That was all part of the NRSA. The Concept Plan for an Urban Forestry Program calls for the city to plant trees to address tree equity and revitalize neighborhoods with low tree canopy, increasing property values. Ensuring equitable tree coverage can help address social injustices so all residents can thrive. As well, the plan includes a street tree giveaway program providing residents native trees to plant in the right way. Volunteers can be recruited and have already signed a volunteer sign-up sheet to help residents with this task. The Sustainability Action Plan has an initiative to calm traffic. A 2006 study reported trees along roadways reduce average speeds eight miles per hour. Besides making roads safer, trees also reduce polluted stormwater runoff and flooding. The Sustainability Action Plan calls for safe and comfortable sidewalks and bikeways providing walkable neighborhoods, improving residents' health. Properly placed street trees shade sidewalks, reducing sidewalk temperatures as much as 45 degrees Fahrenheit. Per the Sustainability Action Plan, the city continues to lose tree canopy due to development. This Concept Plan calls for increasing tree canopy by strategically planting trees to provide residents the most benefits. U.S. Forestry Service tree planting grants are available for the purchase and planting of community trees. Congress has provided $1.5 billion for urban forestry. Adopt the sustain, one more sentence. Adopt the Sustainability Action Plan and the Concept Plan for an Urban Forestry Program recommended by TEC and just get started planting trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Kay. Next up.
Bill Klein, 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. In the past three to five years, Titusville has made the same strategic goal, one quality of life. Sub-goal one, continued initiatives and actions to improve the Indian River Lagoon. Vice Mayor Robinson stated in a Parks meeting that Titusville completed 11 projects to accomplish this goal. He stated that this was more than any other city in Bovard County and declared that they were successful. This reminds me of two diabetics with fasting blood sugar level of 150. They set goals to improve their health. Diabetic one reads diabetic advice literature and starts 11 projects to follow for the next year. He accomplishes all 11 and declares himself a success. He asked for praise in completing those projects. However, his fasting food, blood sugar level is 180, which is at a dangerous level. Diabetic two reads diabetic advice literature and he starts a monitoring and testing program, testing his blood sugar daily to adjust his actions. His fasting blood sugar level drops to 110, just above the normal daily amount to adjust his, I mean, level of 70 to 100 counts. He failed to reach his goal of 100. He continues his program for the following year to achieve his goal, which diabetic has improved their health. This reminds me of Titusville's strategic goals. We might succeed in accomplishing 11 projects, but the IRL is in worse condition than the manatee deaths have greatly increased in the past five years. Titusville ought to start a monitoring and testing program to determine the various pollutant sources and the pollutant concentrations. They need to set safe pollutant levels for a healthy lagoon. We don't know what they are right now. Then start various programs to lower the pollutant levels and test to see what programs actually accomplish significant pollution reductions. Titusville should continue this course of action to restore and maintain the IRL. Right now, Titusville does not provide any testable, measurable parameters for stormwater or the IRL that protect public safety or improve the quality of life. This goal has been a failure every year that it has been written. Why don't you test and find what works and how to do more of that? We need testing and monitoring of the IRL to improve it. And we have, Titusville has turned down testing of the IRL, turned down testing of the stormwater ponds, turned down testing of stormwater outflows into the IRL. This needs to be done so we can understand what we need. Thank you.
Next up.
How you doing? Hi, Stan Johnson, 860 points at HAVNA. What Mr. Klein was talking about is something that, actually, it's in the, he's put it in appendix, in appendix E in a sustainability plan about testing and so forth like that. That's there. It's been proposed again and again and again and again, and you guys listened to it, but you completely ignore it. So now we have a case of somebody allegedly saying that the city of Titusville had a sewage spill and they're, you got a young boy paralyzed. And we got also all kinds of reports of MRSA that you don't get reports of. So anyhow, it's a problem, but I want to bring again the attention of this issue right here. Free Cross the Green, if you're watching 48 Hours on Sunday, is that he was, again, shown to the public as being very much, let's say, disadvantaged and unfairly treated. And he's going back to prison. He's been in prison already for 30 years, over 30 years, and he's innocent. They even had his sister in court say that he had confessed to her that he had done, he had killed this girl. And then later she recanted, says, listen, here's what they did. They threatened me. They threatened me that they would take away my children if I didn't testify against my brother. Have we heard that before? Repeatedly from other people who have gone through our state attorney's office. They have new witnesses that say that people confessed to me. They did it for the other people who were wrongly convicted that have been released. Those two guys, Dilton something and another guy. So it's horrible. And I'm just bringing it to your attention again because it should, it needs to be done. It needs to be, you need to look at this because it seems like the state attorney just ran over, and the Supreme Court just ran over justice. I want to read this to you. This is April 24th, emailed to Mr. Cook. And it says the subject, I'll just read the subject of this email. It's just a really short email, but the subject's pretty long. Here it says, subject, April 24th. Another reporting of and a new request for you to investigate and to confirm two open notorious witness photographed and videotaped sewage spills and spraying women, children, babies, whoever is nearby with sewage spray from fountains left on in public parks, Sandpoint, State View Park, and Senior Center Park as follows. Now, this is, Mr. Cook has got a new position, as you're aware of. So number one sewage spill was into nine city streets, numerous front yards during and after Hurricane Eon, November 20, September to November 22nd. May I have two more minutes? Probably not. Can't you read the title?
Okay. All right, thanks, sir. Next up.
Mr. Mayor, can I use just a few seconds to thank all of you? And I'll tell you why.
Yes, you may.
Okay. And I, first of all, I was in Tallahassee for the latest legislative session about, what, a week and a half ago. I met with the liaison of the Lieutenant Governor's Office, also the liaison of the AG, okay, Attorney General. I found out some things that were really shocking going on in our town. You all know, first of all, let me thank you for all being here and listening to us and humbling yourselves. Sometimes people get in and just vent on you. And I love you all and I thank all of you. And I know you guys get vented on, too. So I want to thank you for coming to our Mobile Home Park. You said you would come, you came, and you won a lot of hearts with the elderly people. Okay? You did this. And all of you here deserve accolades. And I'll tell you why. I've been places in Tallahassee. I have witnessed at the Judicial Committee the way people were treated, and it's nothing like you treat us. They treated people very badly. There were people up there from all over Florida that all they wanted to do is speak. They put them at the very end of the meeting on purpose, and then they cut them off. There were 40 people, of which I wanted to speak, on what was going on in our town. They put us at the very end, then they cut a bunch of people off and said, that's it. And of course, there were different coalitions of people there. Some of them were very liberal. Me, I'm very conservative. But we were all there for affordable housing. And I'm amazed the way everybody was treated. Nevertheless, I witnessed, after having said that, that's why I want you to know, that I thank you so much for putting the public first. Not everybody does this. You do it. You're Titusville. You represent us, man. And you know why we're losing representation? And I want our city attorney, manager, to understand this. Because this is what I found out. Preemption laws, HB 1417, I watched them run it through. It says that it's going to make it quicker and easier to evict people. Now, get this, under the same preemption laws that they slide into every law that they're doing to us, they're preempting your power, your power to run this city. And our state is getting it centralized. Well, get this, guess what I found out? I found out that the new live local act that should be helping this young man, our police, guess what? Look at it. Look at it. You know, they got a preemption right at the very beginning.
Two more minutes?
Okay.
Wait, can you go two more minutes?
Yes, yes.
All right, wait, wait, wait.
Thank you.
Motion, second, favor. Two minutes, go.
The preemption laws are in every one of our laws and they're taking power from us. They're taking it from us. And what they're going to do with the 711 million on this live acts, and some of it's really good, but they actually preempted it. And with 1417, what happens when our first responders, they get the money, they get in a house, they hit rough times, inflation goes up, maybe, I hate to say it, maybe somebody's divorced, and then guess what? This law right here, they move in, go, oh, you're evicted. Now the bank takes over, the money goes, and what happens to our first responders? They're evicted. Yeah, look at these laws. These are already set up for the banks and the mortgage companies. And you know what it says in SB 102? It says things like this. Don't look at what's in the law, look what's not in it. Get this, it said, under certain circumstances, but they don't list the circumstances. And it says, under certain projects, but they don't list the projects. Who would give $711 million to people who don't list the projects and they don't give a listing of certain circumstances? Define that. People, it's about, I think it's 160 pages long. Did any of you read it? The whole thing? Has anybody here read it? Okay, I haven't read the whole thing, but with these laws being passed, this is a formulation for the CCP. And I'm not talking about communists. I'm talking about centralized power, okay, in Tallahassee. And you know what? I counted 1,500 lobbyists and a lot of them had Armani suits and they were well-coiffed. And that's who was getting their business done. I was shocked. And then I talked to the DOJ in their office. You know what they told me? I said, look, we got this big problem down there. You guys are letting corporations in and some of them have been backed by money. We found out this, by money.
Let me get a second. You make your point very clear.
Okay.
Very well. But I'll also say that, as Member Stokel can tell you, that we were informed of this at the League of Cities, of the centralization issues. And quite honestly, the concern that many municipalities have and councils have is our power is kind of shrinking.
Marijuana dispensaries? Check into that one. They've got one there, too. You know how many you're allowed to put here by state law? You either have zero or you can put 35. You know why? Because the number of pharmacies you have here, you have, you equalize that to those. I'm going, seriously, folks? Do you want this? Portland, Oregon, Seattle? That's what's coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate you. Anybody else for this one? Without that, we'll go at 25? All right, 25, 7:25, next meeting. This one is adjourned.